All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Council Leader Order. Mary Jo, can you call and roll?
Meg Ryan, Shaki. Here. Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Aaron Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance?
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for the time that we have once again to gather as a council and as administration of the city that you've given us the privilege of living in, Lord, and serving. We thank you for the chance that we have to discuss these issues tonight. I know there's a lot of sickness going around the communities in this area. I pray that you'll please provide healing for those that are ill to get beyond the men very soon. Lord, we thank you for the safety you gave us in our elections once again here in America last Tuesday. We thank you that we live in a nation where that's the case. We pray that you'll please help those things to continue. Lord, bless our time tonight as we discuss these issues. We pray that we will make wise decisions for the residents of this city. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from our last meeting October 24th. Any comments or questions? All right, move to approve.
To approve the minutes, Meg Ryan, Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is going to say for the good or well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Just remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer. There is no one. Okay. We'll now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with our Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryan Shaki.
I just wanted to give a brief thank you to everybody who donated to the collection last month to help raise awareness for Domestic Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And all of the goods went to the Journey Center. For anybody experiencing domestic abuse or knows someone who is, the Journey Center has a 24/7 helpline which anybody can call or text into when they're ready. The number to call or text is (216) 391-4357. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is the Rec Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. City of Brooklyn Christmas kickoff begins with a Christmas pajama night at the North Polar Express Gate, AKA the Brooklyn Rec Center, Friday, December 9th, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Pictures with the Polar Express train, believer bells, hot cocoa, letters to Santa, and ice skating with Christmas music. Skate rental is free, but limited sizes are available. Special Christmas crafts will be available for purchase. Registration is required. Sign up now at www.brooklynrec.com. Next Recreation Board meeting will be held November 21st in the Rec Center Meeting Room, 7:00 p.m. Concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. Next up is our legislative update. Mr. Borowski.
Thank you, Council President. My update today is actually going to be dealing with the employer contributions to Ohio Police and Fire Fund. The Ohio House Insurance Committee will be having its third meeting on House Bill 512 at 10:00 a.m. this Wednesday, November 16th, in the hearing room of 116 at the Ohio State House. This bill would increase the contribution amounts that employers of full-time firefighters and full-time police officers must take, make to the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund over a five-year period, up to 26.5% for both police and fire. That is my report.
Thank you. Next up is the Planning Commission, Councilman Obruck.
Thank you. At November 2nd meeting, the Planning Commission considered two items. The first was a request from Cisco Imaging for a monument sign for Memorial Heights at 8251 Memphis Avenue. And the second was a recommendation back to City Council for approval for legislation 2022-34 through 2022-42. Those are the ordinances pertaining to the revised zoning code, which would be going before voters in the May ballot. The next, sorry, I didn't look this up. The next Planning Commission meeting is the first Wednesday, which will be December 7th at 6:00 p.m. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is our School Board liaison, Councilman Pucci.
Thank you. This month, the board has altered their meeting schedule. Their work session is tomorrow, Tuesday, November 15th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Treasurer's Conference Room. And then their regular meeting is Tuesday, November 2nd, at 6:00 p.m., Room 173. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Public Safety and Environmental Committee, Councilwoman Schrager.
The Public Safety and Environmental Committee will be meeting, we have a tentative meeting for 6 o'clock on November 28th, which is the date of our next regularly scheduled council meeting. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next is the Committee of the Whole. We did meet at 6:15 this evening to discuss the following. We did have three notifications, the first of which was an award of $737,800 through the ODOD Building Demolition and Site Revendulation Program. We talked about this in the past. We were seeking funds from this program to help with the raising of this building once the new city hall is completed, and we were approved for those funds. There is a 25% match that the city will be responsible for, but Cuyahoga County will be covering that match. And so the mayor indicated that the total cost for this project will come in under those funds, so that will be 100% funded by that program. So we're grateful for that. Next was a $600 donation from Triad Engineering for the city's Thanksgiving program. So we thank Triad for once again partnering with the city to help those in need this Thanksgiving season. And then another one very similar to that is 75 gift cards, the amount of $20 each, from Minuteman Ohio Comp, once again for the city's Thanksgiving program. So they've done this in the past as well, so thank you to Minuteman Ohio Comp for that. Under legislation from our last meeting, ordinance 2022-27 was recommended by council to authorize the mayor to enter to a lease agreement with PCs for People Minnesota. This is to help with the broadband expansion program in this area. If this is adopted, this would allow Cuyahoga County to, and this PCs for People Minnesota, to use the rooftops of a couple of our buildings to install antennas to help with the furtherance of Wi-Fi in this area. On second reading this evening is ordinance 2022-29. This is authorizing the capital improvement plan for 2023, and this was discussed at length at our last meeting. Ordinance 2022-30 amends section 505.21 for the hunting, poisoning, and trapping of the city ordinances. Again, this was discussed at our last meeting. This would increase the penalty for violating this ordinance that already does exist. Ordinance 2022-32, this has been referred to, the Public Safety and Environmental Committee was just mentioned by Mrs. Ryan Shaki. It'll take place prior to our next council meeting. This is enacting a new chapter, 765 Apartment Complex Security. Among other things, it would require security cameras to be installed at residential rental locations having three or more units, and we will have further discussion at that committee meeting when it is scheduled for the 28th. Next is ordinance 2022-33. This is on second reading. This would amend the eligibility for the snow removal services for the city. And again, we discussed this at length actually in our last two meetings. Ordinance 2022-34 through ordinance 2022-42, these are the ordinances that was just mentioned by Mrs. Grodick that would allow for the adoption of the new zoning code that would then be presented to the voters in the May primary, and that those are on second reading. Our new legislation this evening, the first several are on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of rules. The first is authorizing a community cost sharing grant with an agreement with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. This is something that we partner with the sewer district each year, and this deals with the Water, Soil, and Water Conservation District. Next is the approval of an application for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and this is to help offset the costs for the natorium roof replacement project. That cost is a little over a million dollars, and if we were awarded these funds, it would be $150,000 that would go towards the cost of that project. Next is Resolution 2022-42. This is approving an application with the Cuyahoga County Supplemental Grant Program, and this is for the exterior home repair grant program for our city. This will be a $50,000 grant that residents would be able to apply for to help with the exterior improvements of their home. Next is Resolution 2022-43. This is the Land and Water Conservation Fund application, and this is to help cover the costs of the lights and security cameras in Marquard Park. It would come from the Land and Water Conservation Fund through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The total cost for that project is $165,000. If we do receive these funds, it will be 50% of that total for $82,500. All four of those councils did recommend, or excuse me, the committee did recommend that council adopt by emergency. The next four pieces of legislation, excuse me, five pieces of legislation are on first reading. The first one is authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Senior Transportation Connection to provide senior bus transportation services to the city of Brooklyn. Currently, the city provides this service in-house with our own vehicles and our own employee. At the end of the year, that employee will be retiring, and so the city is looking to move to a third-party Senior Transportation Connection to provide those services. And we will keep the vehicles. This is going to be on a trial basis for a six-month to a year to see how it goes. We've heard very positive comments from other cities that use this, Transportation Connection. So if this is adopted, the city will move to that for the time being. That's on first reading. Next is Resolution 2022-44. This will enact a new section of our animal prohibitions in the city that allow for the keeping of chickens in the city. And Mr. Butler in the committee ran through a whole laundry list of what would go on if his ordinance is adopted. It's on first reading. It has been referred to the Public Safety and Environmental Committee. It will be a topic of discussion at our November 28th meeting if that meeting does indeed take place on that day. Next up is ordinance 2022-45. This is the amended annual appropriations for 2022. Mr. Regus will give an update on what this entails when he gives his report later in the meeting. As well as ordinance 2022-46, which is the appropriation budget for 2023. This was the topic of discussion at our budget meeting that we had last Monday night. And again, Mr. Regus will hit the highlights of that as well when he gives his report. Ordinance 2022-47, this is amending, amendment 2022-43, and this amends the wage schedule for part-time and full-time administrative employees. Mr. Regus went over that. I'll go over it very briefly just to get on the record. But the first adjustment would be an adjustment to the top range from $80,000 to $85,000 for the Assistant Building Commissioner. Adjustment to the Recreation Department, excuse me, the adjustment is for the Recreation Department Manager in 2023. Next is an adjustment to the top range for the Housing Manager from $60,000 to $65,000 for 2023. And these adjustments are per the 3% increase that is being put through with the unions. Next is the part-time administrative position to increase the bottom range to incorporate the Ohio minimum wage that has gone up to $10.10 an hour, and that's the case for part-time administrative, part-time recreation, part-time property maintenance inspector, as well as part-time public service. And then also to the intern position. And then lastly, was to update wage ranges based upon analysis for comparable communities for the auxiliary police officers, school guards, part-time jailers, special police officers, part-time law enforcement and service clerks, as well as kennel managers. And that is to make Brooklyn's wages comparable with other communities. And that is also on first reading. And then last piece of legislation was accepting ordinance 2022-48. This is for first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of rules. This accepts the medical insurance renewal for Medical Mutual Ohio for the coverage dated January 1st to December 31st. This is hoping to pass by suspension rules because there is no cost increase for 2023. We have it at a 0% per the contract we signed with them last year. That is all that we discussed in Committee of the Whole. Again, that takes place normally at 6:15 prior to the start of all regularly scheduled council meetings. It takes place right here. All are welcome to attend. All right, that concludes our reports of our committees. We'll now move on with reports of council. Begin this evening with Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the 35 students, along with the several teachers and assistant principal for Brooklyn High School who came out last Tuesday to rake good leaves for the seniors. We had a list of 16 homes to cover that day, and actually we added a few, such as the one in Memphis Villas where we had two homes on one side of the street, older gentleman who was already working on his own yard on the other side of the street. So since we were there, we just kind of went along and helped them finish up. So it was a good day. Tomorrow, November 15th, is the 25th anniversary of American Recycles Day. On American Recycles Day, the EPA recognizes the importance and impact of recycling, which has contributed to American prosperity and the protection of our environment. Current recycling rate has increased from less than 7% in 1960 to the current rate of 32%. Congratulations to the following homes as being chosen as this year's winners in the Halloween Home Decorating Contest. 6303 North Cliff, 6408 Delora, 6223 Trane More, 6215 Trane More, 4357 Rockland, 9010 Insonia, 8612 Outlook, and 7412 Taunton. Thank you to everybody, and there were a lot, a lot of other homes. People took the time to decorate. It's much appreciated by probably the older kids, our age, a little bit in our age, and the young kids too. And for everyone, just have a peaceful and joyful Thanksgiving, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank the voters for supporting the renewal for our schools, and it was really nice to see that it passed by a very healthy margin. According to the unofficial results, it was 66% in favor, 34% opposed. I'd also like to thank all those who volunteered for this effort, including residents Steve Herbig and Vern Cutwright, who led the committee and the effort, and also Mr. Marcus, who is the treasurer of the Support Our Schools Committee. And I'd like to wish all of our residents and all of our employees and their families a very happy Thanksgiving. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski.
Thank you. This past week, I was able to attend the open house for the Avenue at Brooklyn. It's a convalescent hospital rehab care center that's located right behind Ridge Park Square at 4700 Idlewood. It'll have slightly over 100 private suites, and I spoke with a few of the directors the other night, and they feel as though it's very important for them to be in Brooklyn. They want to be engaged and involved with the community. And I'd like to also personally welcome the two young gentlemen that are now running the business Tier Zero at Ridge Park Square right by the AMC Movie Theater. They had a grand opening this past Friday. Very pleasant being there. And then also, this past Friday at our local Bedoff Plaza, I got involved with World's Gym in setting up a Toys for Tots box donation at their facility. The toys will be collected on the 14th of December, and I'll personally take them to the warehouse myself. And also, this past Friday was Veterans Day. I'd like to say thank you to all of our veterans that live not only in Brooklyn but Cuyahoga County. And in saying that, it's got to be said that there are some veterans that do much better than others. Some deal with bad physical scars, mental scars, and there is assistance out there through cuyahogavets.org. Their phone number is (216) 698-2600, and the other number is (1866) 915-8387. And that concludes my report.
Congratulations to the Brooklyn City Schools on the renewal levy. I'd like to wish all the residents and their families and friends a happy Thanksgiving. And I'd like to thank Andy Selhertz. He had lights out on Newberry, and I called him at 10 o'clock at night, and he dropped everything and ran over there and got the lights back on. Now, that was service. Thanks, Andy. I do appreciate it. No, I'm just kidding. He went, did go over there the next day to find out what pole was out, and he did contact appropriate people, and I don't know if that light's on now, Andy, or we're still working on it?
Still working on it.
Still working on it. But no, I do appreciate it. Thanks. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Grodick.
Thank you. Yesterday, November 13th, was International Kindness Day, and even though International Kindness Day has come and gone, I think kindness is something that we can spread throughout, but especially during this, this month and the upcoming month, especially in our holidays. And with that note, I would like to thank Triad Engineering and Minuteman Ohio Comp for, again, their generous donations to help our community through Thanksgiving. Brooklyn Schools is also sponsoring the Brooklyn Cares Christmas Program. So the last note that I saw, there were 48 families that were asking for some support for Christmas, and it's a wonderful program in our community, also through our schools really supports that, so I appreciate that also. And I also would like to say Happy Veterans Day, or wish the veterans my thoughts. Brooklyn Schools put on a very nice ceremony once again, and it was wonderful to see the veterans in our community come to that ceremony and to watch the children, you know, who are as young as five and as old as 12 and 13, be able to see veterans among our community, their grandmas and grandpas, and aunts and uncles, and mothers and fathers. And one of my favorite stories is when I was teaching first grade, we, there was one of my students, and her grandfather was there as a veteran. And we always say, "You can go sit with your veteran." And when the principal came, she looked at me and she said, "I don't have a veteran there. That's my papa." And just to see through her eyes, that's, that's her papa. So to be able to show the children that they are our papas and our dads and our mamas, and, but, but we all look at them very specially, especially on Veterans Day. So thank you very much to our veterans for your service and our active military also. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Schrager.
I just have one thing kind of going on what Sue said with the Brooklyn Cares Program. The Cuyahoga County Division of Senior and Adult Services is doing an elves for elders program this holiday season. So between now and November 30th, they are looking for elves to help spread holiday cheer to their clients this winter. If you're interested in signing up or learning, learning more, you can reach out to Daphne James at (216) 698-4731. I just hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving, and we'll see you after that holiday. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up, the mayor, you said you had one?
I'd also like to thank our veterans. We had a nice coffee and donuts courtesy of the Avenue, which Aaron mentioned, who just opened up, so already trying to participate in the community and be involved, so we thank you for that. And then one other thing, I'd like to congratulate and wish well Jim Catania, who retired. Jim, he spent his career in the Service Department here. He started in September 25th, 1995, and he retired on October 12th of this year. He was also a very reliable employee, always showing up to work, a valuable labor and driver. He worked diligently at maintaining the beautification and safety of our streets, our neighborhoods, and parks throughout the years. He was also a special auxiliary police officer since 1995, and we just thank him for his service, and I am sure once he gets a few months under his belt, being retired, he'll come back and work as an auxiliary again. So you'll probably see him or all to continue to see him. So congratulations and best of luck.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, now we'll now move on with the legislative portion of our agenda, the three notifications I already read earlier in the Committee of the Whole report. Oh, Tom, I skipped right past you.
That's okay.
Yes, Mr. Regus, please, by all means.
So two, two items for me tonight, as a follow-up to Council President Van Kirk's report on the Committee of the Whole meeting. Just more information on ordinance 2022-45 to amend the 2022 appropriation ordinance. So some of the highlights as far as this is concerned, for the general purposes, we're increasing other expenditures in the Police Department by $55,000 to account for higher increases in gas prices. For the ice rink, we're decreasing wages and benefits by $30,000 and increasing other expenditures by $30,000, so wash there. The increase in the other expenditures is, is due to the repairs of the ice rink dehumidification per City Council-approved ordinance number 2022-35. In the poles, we're decreasing wages and benefits by $60,000, $60,000 to account for unused wages and benefits for part-time personnel services. Senior services, we're decreasing wages and benefits by $10,000 due to the senior center vacancy. In the billing department, we're increasing overall expenditures by $152,000. Majority of these are as a result of an increase in reimbursable, reimbursable inspections, as well as the Community Development Supplemental Program that we go through the county for. These monies, these expenditures we get reimbursed for, so much of this is going to be a wash as part of our, as it relates to our financial limits. On the service garage, we're decreasing wages and benefits by $120,000 due to the vacancy in the mechanic position. We're increasing other expenditures by $80,000 for additional gas and repairs. And in the transfers and advances, we're increasing that by $3.5 million, so this was a topic of discussion thoroughly as part of our two budget work sessions with City Council. We're increasing a transfer from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund by $1.5 million to set aside money for future needs as far as the Recreation Center is concerned. We're increasing an advance from the general fund to the TIF fund by $1.325 million to pay off the bond anticipation note associated with the American Road Project that we took out a few years ago. And we're also increasing an advance from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund by $560,000 to pay off the bond anticipation note for the Recreation Center roof. So overall, general fund, it's general fund amendments, increase of $3.647 million. Much of that, 95% of that is a result of an increase in the transfers advances, the $3.5 million. In all the other funds, some of the highlights, we're increasing other expenditures in the Street Construction Fund by $65,000 to take into account higher gasoline prices. We're increasing other expenditures in the State Highway Fund by $35,000 to, for the, to pay our portion of the Burke Park Road Project. This was previously approved as part of the capital budget amendment by City Council a month or two ago. This is a timing difference. We initially set aside money for this, or budgeted money for this in '23, but our, our shares due this year, so we're going to have to count for that. In the Community Development Block Grant Fund, we're increasing other expenditures by $116,000 to take into account for the CDBG portion of the Mark Card Pork Lighting and Security Cameras Project. In Fund 221, Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, we're increasing it by $800,000. This is a result of the $750,000 of county, of ARP money that we're receiving as a, as a pass-through from Cuyahoga County that we're going to pay a portion of the city center project for, and also additional grant dollars that we received from the Police Department for the OCJS grant that we discussed at the budget work session last week. In the Capital Improvement Fund, we're decreasing by $480,000 as part of the capital plan update that was approved by City Council on October 24th to take into account projects that we are deferring to next year as a result of either supply chain issues or for the, for one of our projects, we only received one bid on for the Memphis Road Project, or the I-482 project, I should say. In the Capital Reserve Fund, we're increasing it, other expenditures by $880,000 to pay off the debt associated with Recreation Center Roof, and to also take into account an increase in the Recreation Center Roof Project that we received this year. And in the TIF Fund, we're increasing the other expenditures by $1.124 million to pay off the bond anticipation note for the American Road Project. Overall, we're increasing these, the budget amendment by $7 million. And again, as I like to mention annually when I do this, these are conservative not to exceed estimates. I anticipate our actual cost will come lower than these amounts, but these are conservative not to exceed estimates. And I will do one final review of this ordinance prior to the third reading on December 12th to, to further look into it and see if I need to adjust anything as a result of that. And then the second piece is for the 2023 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, 2022-46. Some of the highlights as a result of this. In the general fund, now this was a topic of discussion at our budget work session last week. Overall, general fund appropriation ordinance of $75,000. Overall, general fund appropriation ordinance of $17.6 million. This is $1.3 million more than the initial 2022 budget. This is mostly, this is as a result of wages and benefits, $265,000 in, in wages set aside for '23 as compared to 2022. That's a 3% wage increase across the board. $427,000, we received ARP, ARP money this year that we used to offset public safety and personnel costs in the Police and Fire Department that we will not be receiving in '23, so that has to be made up within the general fund. And also staffing adjustments as a result of the Fire Department staffing that we discussed last week, and as a result of hiring two additional law enforcement clerk positions as well. So all those changes take into account $1.2 million of the additional $1.3 million for the 2023 budget, general fund budget. Other, in the other funds, some highlights are Economic Development Fund of $2.46 million. That's an increase of $600,000 to take into account additional capital projects budgeted out of the Economic Development Fund. And the capital improvement budget of $6.6 million, and takes into account, that's an increase of $3.6 million as a result of increases in capital projects associated with our recreation department. A lot of that as a result of the recreation center roof project that we're going to go forward with in '23, and an increase in our street program for '23. Overall, appropriation ordinance of 30, of just over $36 million, a $3.7 million increase from 2022 initial appropriations. That concludes my report tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is Ordinance 2022-27. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with PCs for People Minnesota LLC in furtherance of Cuyahoga County's PCs for People broadband expansion program.
Move to adopt?
Senator.
To adopt, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. The next several items under Old Business are on second reading. Ordinance 2022-29, authorizing the capital improvement plan for 2023. Ordinance 2022-30, amending Section 505.21 titled Hunting, Poisoning, Trapping prohibited of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn to amend the penalty provision. Ordinance 2022-32, enacting Chapter 765 Apartment Complex Security of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2022-33, amending Section 959.02 of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn to amend eligibility guidelines for snow removal services provided by the city. Ordinance 2022-34, adopting new Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn and the new official zoning map of the city. Ordinance 2022-35, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Brooklyn Section 1102.09 of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn, creating new public facilities, PF, and parks and open spaces, PO, zoning districts. Ordinance 2022-36, submit rezoning of properties to public facilities, PF, to voters. Ordinance 2022-37, submit rezoning of properties to park and open spaces, PO, to voters. Ordinance 2022-38, submit rezoning of properties to General Industrial, G-I, to voters. Ordinance 2022-39, submit rezoning of properties to General Business, G-B, to voters. Ordinance 2022-40, submit rezoning of properties to Dwelling House, D-H-H, to voters. Ordinance 2022-41, submit rezoning of properties to Retail Business, R-B, to voters. And ordinance 2022-42, submit rezoning of properties to Apartment Houses, A-H, to voters. Under new legislation for this evening, the first four items are on first reading but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. Resolution 2022-40, authorizing a community cost sharing agreement with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Any comments or questions?
Introduced, oh, introduced by all to suspend the rules?
Senator.
To suspend the rules, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-41, approving the application of the city of Brooklyn to apply for a Community Development Block Grant Funds for the natatorium roof replacement project. Additional comments or questions?
Can you dispel, suspend the rules?
Senator.
To suspend the rules, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-42, approving the application of the city of Brooklyn to the Cuyahoga County Supplemental Grant Program for an exterior home repair grant program. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all to suspend the rules?
Senator.
To suspend the rules, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
To adopt, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. Resolution 2022-43, Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Application Approval. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all to suspend the rules?
Senator.
To suspend the rules, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. The next five pieces of legislation are on first reading. Resolution 2022-44, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Senior Transportation Connection to provide senior bus transportation services in the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2022-44, amending Section 505.08, certain animals prohibited, and enacting Section 505.27, restrictions on keeping of chickens of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn to regulate the keeping of chickens. Ordinance 2022-45, amended annual appropriations, this is for 2022. Ordinance 2022-46, annual appropriations, this is for 2023. Ordinance 2022-47, amending Exhibit A of Ordinance 2022-43, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time and administrative employees' non-barting agreement of the city of Brooklyn. The appropriations for 2022 and 2023, those were the ordinances that Mr. Ragus was referring to a moment ago. The last item on our agenda this evening is on first reading, hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is ordinance 2022-48, accepting the medical insurance renewal for the Medical Mutual of Ohio for medical insurance coverage for eligible employees from January 1 to December 31 of 2023. This is a 0% increase from our current rate with Medical Mutual. Any comments or questions?
Can you introduce, balance, suspend the rules?
Senator.
To suspend the rules, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Does any other member of council or the mayor or the directors have anything to add?
One quick question. We talked about sending the chicken ordinance to committee. Did we have to officially do that?
I'll make the motion that we refer Ordinance 2022-44 to committee.
Senator.
To refer to committee, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. Anything else from anyone? All right, do want to wish the residents of Brooklyn a happy Thanksgiving. Hope you enjoy time with friends and family. Be safe, and we'll see you in our next meeting. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.